Good evening, everyone. Welcome. So thankful that you've joined us tonight. It is Tuesday, May 8th. Weathersfield Board of Education meeting. Town Council chambers. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Ellen?
Yes, Vice Chair. Thank you. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Granato?
Present.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Lakhavali?
Here.
Dr. Regan LaFreville?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey. And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Ryan Fazina. All present.
Thank you, Ellen. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? We are High Crest contingency leaders in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And, Mr. Emmett, do we have students' staff recognition tonight?
Yes, we do this evening. Mr. Cassio, good evening, everyone. We have some world travelers among us from the High Crest Elementary School, and I would like them to please come up to the podium and share their good news. Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Christine Maury. I'm the principal at High Crest Elementary School. And tonight, I'm here to speak with you about Fund for Teachers. Fund for Teachers is a national organization that provides fellowships for teachers to self-design and embark on summer professional growth experiences. To be eligible, teachers need to be teaching for at least three years. Individuals may be able to request up to $5,000 for a grant, and teams of teachers are able to access a $10,000 grant. The Dalio Philanthropies is the funding partner supporting all Connecticut Fund for Teachers grant recipients. This year, in the state of Connecticut, 99 grants were awarded to 69 individuals and 30 teaching teams totaling 131 teachers. They come from 102 Connecticut schools in 56 districts. They will be traveling throughout the United States and to over 50 countries in order to meet their goals of better addressing the needs of their students by deepening their curricular understandings. In addition to the fellowship, grant recipients are invited to join teachers from around the country to participate in mentorships, affinity circles, and innovation grants. Also, in Connecticut, fellows may choose to attend workshops and receive support in pursuing National Board certification. Chris Wedgie, a High Crest parent, is one of the board members for Fund for Teachers. And last year, as I was a first-year principal, he came to me to speak about the lack of participation from Weathersfield teachers in Fund for Teacher grants. And he wanted to promote this. So he came to our school and spoke to us about these opportunities to write a Fund for Teachers grant. And last year, we had three teachers receive the grant: Megan Slazinski, Emily Mamaklay, and Kayla Dona. Those three teachers embarked on an incredible summer experience of travel. This year, Chris came back again to present to our staff and talk about an additional opportunity and how more grants would be awarded this year. And so it is my pleasure to introduce you tonight to three additional recipients from our High Crest School who also received the Fund for Teachers grant. They were awarded this grant on Tuesday, March 28th, and we had a big celebration. I am so thrilled to share with you tonight: Ryan Boothroyd, LeAnn Silver, and Sarah Myers, three of the newest Fund for Teacher grant recipients.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Boothroyd, and I teach sixth grade at High Crest. My role as a sixth-grade teacher includes teaching ancient history to my sixth-grade students. In my current Egypt unit, I use the program TCI History Alive: Ancient World. I begin by teaching students about the current geography of Egypt. While I'm able to show them pictures that I find online, having authentic photographs and videos from Egypt will assist students in understanding the Nile River Basin area and the surrounding deserts. This will allow students to better comprehend why the Egyptians settled near the Nile River Basin. Additionally, students will learn about various Egyptian pharaohs and examine historical temples and structures during our units. But seeing pictures, videos, and hearing vivid descriptions from my firsthand experiences of these places will help foster their curiosity. The purpose of my fellowship will be to experience life in Egypt, including specific historical places and the culture of the Egyptian people. While it is not possible for students to actually visit these historical places they learn about during our Egypt unit and experience the culture firsthand, I know that I can convey my experiences to them upon my return. The artifacts that I collect or purchase, the photographs and videos I take while witnessing these amazing sights, visiting museums, and experiencing life in Egyptian cities today will allow me to return to the classroom with newfound knowledge, passion, and inspiration for teaching our sixth-grade social studies curriculum in Weathersfield.
We're really nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Hello, everyone. I'm LeAnn Silver, reading specialist at High Crest School.
And I'm Sarah Myers, first-grade classroom teacher.
And together, we wrote a grant. And we'd like to, we're very excited for this opportunity, and we just want to share a little bit more about our grant and sort of our inspiration for it. So we titled our grant "Balance to Blossom." And this summer, we'll be embarking on our professional learning opportunity thanks to the Fund for Teachers grant program. We will be traveling to Iceland to participate in a yoga retreat. We will be spending five days at the retreat, being immersed in daily yoga activities, meditation experiences. We'll be learning mindfulness strategies and connecting with nature.
Our experience abroad will enrich our social and emotional curriculum lessons that we do right now and add valuable new content knowledge for ourselves and for our students. Our current curriculum centers around kindness, friendship, and manners. But this opportunity will add content on managing one's individual emotions, being centered and mindful, and being kind to oneself. We believe that to help our students be the best versions of themselves, that we in turn need to be socially and emotionally balanced.
And our goal for this fellowship is to foster really kind, calm, and confident students, that they can grow and to lead by example with the strategies that we hope to bring back to our school, both in enthusiasm for mindfulness and learning to all those around them. So we really feel that each student will demonstrate growth and also blossom in both their social-emotional learning as well as their academic achievement, as collaborators, communicators, as well as problem solvers. And our school has really put a focus on SEL learning this year in particular. We started a daily morning circle. That's part of our routine for relationship building. And all support staff, special area teachers, are all part of these morning circles. So I'm a part of that, and I travel. Every two months, we rotate the classrooms that we spend our time in, so we get a chance to really have an impact on all the students. And I'm really eager, and we are very eager, to bring back these new learnings, some techniques, meditation practices to our morning circles, to our whole school, and also share with the district as well.
I also do a lot of yoga almost every single day with my little first graders. We do yoga in the morning to start our day very peacefully, and we meditate after lunch and recess. And I personally have seen so much positivity with calming these little ones, you know, in stressful times and students that have anxiety. So to deepen my understanding and to add more to what I already do, we are also looking to connect with not only the students and sharing that knowledge with them, but also to our staff and even the parents in our community. Next year, we're hoping to implement some new things. Christine is so wonderful. So she's super open to everything. Some of the things that we're hoping to bring back to our school and to Weathersfield, we want to show students how to take charge of their bodies and actions and tackle any task that's given to them. Since it's such a competitive and stressful world, students can even help their peers. They can become like little mini-teachers, show them how to coach into other kids on the playground and try to help calm their friends down if there's ever a little problem. Students can also teach their families their new knowledge to create a calming environment in their home. I know we've had a lot of parents come reaching out to us and ask for advice on, you know, they're like, "Your child is so great in school. How come they're so wild and crazy at home?" So to how to create a calming environment in their house as well. We also hope to share yoga and calming techniques with our colleagues, hopefully during some professional development workshops or some after-school staff meetings. And we're hopefully planning on doing some voluntary after-school yoga and meditation classes with any staff that would like to participate and learn some new things and for themselves and for their classrooms.
Very good.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
You were excellent.
Board members, you have any comments?
No.
Bobby?
Well, I just, first of all, congratulations. This is great. And I'm glad somebody did come and introduce this idea to everybody.
Thank you.
Right on cue. That was perfect. But I also see a piece of this that, you know, the kids will notice too, is your excitement for getting away. We all love Weathersfield. We love Weathersfield Public Schools. But there's a world out there. And the fact that their teachers are going out there to learn, I think it's a wonderful lesson in itself. So, great job. Have a wonderful time, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Board members?
Thank you so much for, you know, making the trek out and, you know, making the school system a little bit better, a little bit wider. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Oops, sorry. Yeah, congratulations to all of you, and I'm really excited for you. I hope more students, excuse me, more teachers in Weathersfield will have opportunities to do this in future. And you can't pour from an empty cup. So I'm, thank you for investing in yourselves and continuing to be strong teachers.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm super jealous. I hope that you guys take lots of pictures, and if you could share them with us. Egypt is a bucket list one of mine. But I can't wait. And I think the yoga would be a fantastic idea. And, you know, maybe that's something that we should implement before we have some of our more stressful budget meetings. So, but thank you so much, and good luck. We can't wait to hear it.
Thank you.
Any other board members? No, I think this is wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the energy and the time to go forward. Is both Egypt and Iceland five days?
I'll be gone for two weeks.
Two weeks, right. Boy, good for you.
It's actually a tour through a company called GEO, G-E-O-O, and they do different tours for teachers. So it's with other educators that I don't even know yet. So it's pretty exciting to meet other educators as well, but also experience that with them.
Great, good. Well, please be safe. And, you know, I know you're going to include teachers and, you know, parents and children. The board might want to do some yoga, too.
Well, I said if there's a follow-up for them.
I don't know if I'll get off the floor. Sounds like a policy and planning subject. But thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I want to say, I know the amount of work and the amount of effort. This was an application process that was really rigorous, and I know how much work went into it. And as superintendent of schools, I could not be prouder to be working with you, to think about the effort that you put into this to make the lives of our kids better. I mean, I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Chris Wedgie, who's out in the crowd. He did sneak in. I saw him sneak in. He has been an absolutely wonderful benefactor for the Fund for Teachers. He has been with us every step of the way, and we appreciate everything that you've done to help make these experiences real for our teachers here in Weathersfield. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, now we have board comment. Any comment from board members? Bobby?
Okay. I was invited to attend the Special Ed PTO meeting on Wednesday, May 3rd, at the Webb School Media Center. The Special Ed PTO is an organized group of parents and educators who come together on the first Wednesday of every month for an informative, inclusive, and engaging meeting. All new members are welcome. The Special Ed PTO had a guest speaker, Catherine Schreinberg Myers. Catherine is the Director and Senior Staff Attorney at the Center for Children's Advocacy. There was a PowerPoint presentation on the issues of suspension and expulsions and details on PPTs and the 504 processes. There was also a discussion of the concerns for the large class loads of our Weathersfield resource teachers. The group is working to help parents with special education students in our schools. They are looking for positive ways to help and for ways to inform and communicate with our town. Also had Keen for Kids meeting on Thursday, May 4th. The meeting started with Caroline Fazina reviewing our after-school enrichment program. The Groups for Gardening and Tennis will be starting. High Crest and Webb Elementary Schools will be presenting Willy Wonka and Matilda this month. Right now, there are 1,000 students enrollments, an impressive number for the spring session, and over half of the activities are over-enrolled. And Caroline is already starting organization for the fall of 2023. The Hands-on Science for All Elementary Students has been a widely and enthusiastically received science lessons in the grades, with all grades K through six participating. Running clubs in the schools are enjoying the weather to run for their schools and to perhaps be participants in the Keen Foundation 5K Race on Sunday, June 4th, at the Standish Park in Old Weathersfield. An encore, a program at Silas Dean Middle School is having a very positive impact on a group of 49 students as an after-school program. Students are working on social and emotional skills, physical activities, and enjoying planning activities with their families. This is a two-year program and is proving to be such a wonderful model that we hope to see it elsewhere. Please see Keen for Kids and the Keen Foundation websites for more information. And finally, I spent a part of last weekend watching the High Crest School performance of Willy Wonka. It was impressive from the start when the curtain opened, and the director, who is from Hartford Stage, marveled at our young thespians and how they grew in maturity and confidence as actors through this experience. This Friday and Saturday, the Webb School is putting on Matilda. I know you'll not only be entertained, but very impressed at our performing students. The performances on Friday night at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00 are part of the Keen for Kids after-school program. So break a leg. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other board members? Yep, Janice?
I mentioned the last time about the Weathersfield High School Walk for Val, Valerie Peralt, who passed away from cancer. I just wanted to remind everyone that the walk is this Saturday, May 13th. You would check in at 9:30 in the morning at the Weathersfield High School pool entrance. It is to keep her memory alive and to just raise awareness of the scholarship foundation that they have started in her name.
Thank you. Amanda?
I just wanted to say that this week it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So I just wanted to thank all the teachers and staff for everything that they do here. And a special shout-out to those that have to deal with my children. And that is third-grade teacher, Mrs. Bernard, and all of the ones that see Kelly in the high school. So, special thank you. You deserve more than what you get. So thank you.
Thank you. I hate to change to a more somber note, but I would like to thank Vice Chair John Cassio and the Memorial Day Parade Committee for the announcement that John made last time, which is that the committee has decided this year, at the Memorial Day Parade, none of the historic reenactors will be firing off their muskets. And I really appreciate this. It was a suggestion I brought to him, and they discussed it and agreed on this policy. You know, we often talk about the stress kids have endured because of COVID, and that is real. But there's an enormous amount of stress that our kids endure because of the number of mass shootings. I think any kid over the age of eight or nine knows what's going on. And a lot of them have anxiety about being in crowded places and being in public places, being at events like the parade when we should really just be happy and be proud of our town. So I think this is a really important move forward. I recently asked my college seniors, it was a history class, so I asked them what was their kind of first memory of a current event, of a public event. And for most of them, it was Sandy Hook. So they're not just, you know, current students, but they are also the people who will be entering the teaching profession in the next few years. So this is a generation that has been shaped by gun violence. I don't think the solution is ever to militarize our schools. I think it has to be about changing culture. And so I think this move by the Memorial Day Parade Committee is a really good step in the right direction, that of course, we can celebrate our history as a country. We can celebrate Weathersfield's role in the Revolutionary War. And we can also thank veterans from our community and from our families who have given a lot. But we can do that in a way that makes our kids feel safe and makes them feel respected. So thank you so much, John.
Anyone else? Jim?
I witnessed the very nice parade of the band just a few moments ago before the meeting. So those folks are heading off to Florida, and so it should be a very good trip. And I will be attending, so that will be nice for me.
You're not on the bus with them?
No. Only the airplane.
All right, any other board members? Comments? Nope? Okay, I just want to continue with some comments. If you look around the council chambers, these are the artwork from the Emerson Williams School about Memorial Day for them. And it's random grade selection. And I want to thank the Emerson Williams School, the art teacher, and the children for their energy and input to this collaboration with working with the parade. So that was that. Okay. We have, moving on to the approval of the minutes of April 25th. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have public comment. Thank you for joining us. We have a full audience tonight. Any of the public would like to make comment? Okay, thank you. It's silent.
That's their comment.
We have communications. Mr. Emmett?
Yes, I do have communications this evening. Good evening again, everyone. In addition to Teacher Appreciation Week, it also happens to be Nurse Appreciation Week this week. And May 1st was National Principals Day. So it's been the month of appreciation. So this week, the district is providing our teaching and support staff in each school with the world-famous Taco Bar. Our friends at Chartwell's do this each year. It is hugely popular. And for yours truly, who is not a fan of anything green, it's not something I typically attend, but I certainly want to say thank you to all of our teaching staff, our dedicated principals, and our absolutely wonderful nurses for everything that they do to make this district the great district that it is. Couple of other items for you, the RFP update. Do want to let you know that Matt Kazaka, myself, Amanda Drew, and Chuck Carey reviewed two RFPs. We are currently in the process of doing our due diligence and are getting reference checks on both. We expect at the next board meeting, we will have a selection for you. We'll bring an action item before you so that we can get moving on that process. As Mr. Riley said, the WHS band, The Pride of Weathersfield, was over at the high school earlier this evening. They are preparing for their trip to Walt Disney World, where they will be marching at Walt Disney World. So to put it mildly, the excitement over there tonight was palpable. We're certainly looking forward to seeing everybody get to go. It's a great experience for the kids, one that they have worked very, very hard for. So best of luck to them. You'll depart, I'm understanding, on Thursday afternoon, and you will be returning, I believe, very, very late Monday night. It's Tuesday morning. So I know you'll pack a lot of fun in. Best of luck to the band. And again, thank you, Jim. All of our chaperones are going. Mr. Maltesi and Mrs. O'Connor are both going, as well as a variety of other parent chaperones as well. So looking forward to a great experience for the kids. We are exactly one month away from Weathersfield High School graduation. We will say farewell to the class of 2023. Hard to believe that it has come upon us as fast as it has. Earlier this afternoon, I had the opportunity to sit with the Project Safe Grad Committee. We were over at Weathersfield High School talking about preparing for Project Safe Grad, which will take place on Friday night, June 9th, after the graduation ceremony. It is a challenge for us, trying to use the high school, because as you know, if we have a rain event that day, we do use the high school. We had a representative there from Boppers, which is the company that provides us all of the inflatables. We have a plan clearly in place. So in the event we had to use Weathersfield High School for rain, we would just make an adjustment as the start time for Project Safe Grad. So we are ready to go. We did do a walkthrough today. We'll be walking through a couple more times before the event just to make sure that everybody has what they need. So, right now, at this point in time, we are preparing for graduation outside. I have dialed in sunny weather, low humidity, and temperatures in the upper 70s for 6:00 PM, hopefully. Also, just want to make sure you're aware, there are a variety of spring events. You've heard some of them with our musicals that are going on, both recently at High Crest, this weekend at Webb. We have sixth-grade parent night happening this evening over at Silas Dean Middle School. We've got Hammers, Got Talent, that's happening tomorrow evening. We've got Dare graduations. We've got Step Up ceremonies. We'll be getting ready for high school athletic playoffs before you know it, and tournaments. So there's a lot going on here. So it will be a very fast finish to the end of the year, but our teachers are ready. I think our students are ready as well. So with that, that's communications.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Action items. I don't see any action.
None this evening.
Okay, reports and discussions, announcements and information. Board members, you certainly know what you have to announce at your meetings. And if you're not going to be attending, please let the Chair of the Committee know, as well as Chair of the Board and the Superintendent. Okay, we also have a safety and security update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cassio. At this point in time, Mr. Bearbald, our Director of Security, is coming up to the podium. He's going to provide a little update on what we're doing with security training, as well as the submission of the school safety security grant that we have submitted to the state of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight? As Mr. Emmett said, we submit our application, and it was accepted by the state for the safety and security grant. Some of the things we're looking to do in the grant, not everything, but some of the things we're doing is to replace our servers that support our camera system. Is there an end of life? And we need to have those systems, the backbone of that, supported. Additionally, our FOB and key entry system around the district, we're asking for a server for that, because that's an end of life as well. So we're going to replace that. And the other thing we're going to do, the other main item in that grant application was our security system throughout the district in all the schools. We're going to upgrade those and upgrade the emergency panic buttons in each school. Those are three of the main things in there. We've been continuing to do all our safety and fire drills around the district. What we've done, as I said, we've enhanced those. Our typical, just let's get them done, is over with. At some of the schools around the district, we've actually done fire drills and safety drills with students in the hallways, with students in the cafeteria, so we can get our, and students outside at recess. Giving our support staff, especially at the elementary school level, Giving our support staff, especially at the elementary school level, the aides everywhere, an ability and the ability to look and do these drills, so God forbid something happens at those times, they've done it before, they know exactly what to do. Especially at the elementary level, they're not with their teachers at those times, so our support staff needs to know what to do, how to do it, and be confident to do it. So that's, we've been doing that all through the year, and we continue to do so. The last thing we're doing about, I'm really excited about, I don't know if excited is the right word, but I'm conducting an active aggressor training for all district personnel. I put it out to everybody, we had 100 people respond. 20 individuals a day for five days after-school hours down at Silas Dean Elementary, Middle School. What we'll do is we'll conduct a classroom presentation with some questions and answers. I'll go over some things with them, and then we're going to actually do some real-life scenarios to show them, this is why we're going in this route, and this is why it works. So they have a better understanding of why we're doing it, instead of just talking about it. And once we get everybody trained up, we're already starting in that direction, we're going to continue to do those things in our schools and drills, so our teachers, our staff, and our students are prepared. We're never going to have to need it, but they're going to know what to do, God forbid we ever do. So we had a really good response with that, and we'll do it this time, and I plan, and hopefully we'll do some more in the fall as well for people who couldn't attend this round. But we will train them on what to do and make sure that they know how to be safe and keep their children safe.
So Mike, a question for you with regards to the grant. It was submitted, it was accepted for consideration by the state.
That is correct.
At this point in time, we have not gotten notification if we've received any money. And so everybody knows this grant is a matching grant, and so it would be, we would be reimbursed at our rate of about 57%. So that's one of the things we do need to consider, so we may need to utilize our 2% reserve to cover some of the cost here. And again, this grant goes for a couple of years, so we don't have to do everything at once. We can budget appropriately and plan out. I think the other thing I'd like to say too is, we did reach out to physical services as well. Engaged them in the process and asked if there was anything that they were looking to do in terms of door upgrades. At this time, they weren't looking to do that. I will say to this board as well, I believe I put it in a recent Friday update, after Nashville occurred, obviously the first thing we do is we assess what our response is, we assess what our buildings look like, we look for weaknesses. You know, Mike recently did a fire drill over at Hanmer. He was checking exterior doors. He found that one of the doors, there was a spring that was broken. That was a contact to physical services. How long did it take to fix that?
That took like two days, but only because they had to order a part. But the good thing about, the door wasn't open and unfettered. The door, we were, we were okay with it because the door remained locked. It just wasn't be able to utilize for a teacher entrance. So we advised them, we also advised the PD they'd have to use their key, God forbid they have to get in there, and it was turned around rather quickly. So physical service has been very good about responding to exterior doors that we find issues with, they're reported quickly, and they address them quickly. That's our first line of defense, so on them, and they respond rather quickly to those things. But doing perimeter checks and things like that is what I do to find these things, because it's very important.
Board members.
I have a couple questions. One, what is the number for the grant, the amount that you were asking for?
Matt, do you remember the final number? We came up with?
120. 120 total?
So that, 120, and that includes both the servers and the upgrades?
That includes everything. So servers for both the door access and our camera system, and the brand-new renovated alarm system with panic buttons.
Okay.
Yep.
And then two, if we happen to find an exterior door, for example, that looks like it's rotted, who do we report that to? Do we report that to you, or do we report it to the town council that doesn't respond?
Well, so I put in, and we have the, we, I, I-
Not like I haven't, so.
I, if I find a door and I'm aware of it, I put a school, a request in for that to be repaired. The janitors also do that, and I know that the principals do it as well. So they're responsible for it, but you can always let me know. I'll put in the school, dude, I'll put in a request, and then it's there until it's repaired. There are some doors that have rust and stuff on them, they're functional, we do check them, but yeah, that's why we need the new schools, right? I mean, we need to move forward. That's such a huge issue. I mean, our schools are old, let's face it, they're not built to current safety standards, right? It's a huge issue.
I know.
Jim?
You mentioned the active aggressor training.
Yes.
I hate to even say those three words, but will we get a view or a report on what that looks like, or is that something that shouldn't be out into the public?
Well, I mean, the training that's out there is pretty wide, widely known. I mean, it's not, but what I'd like to do is, I can offer it up to any of you, if you want to come, I'll put the dates out to all of you, you can come observe, Mr. Emmett's going to come observe. There's five dates, they're going to be after-school, starting at 3:15 or 3:45, to accommodate our personnel to get there on time. So I'll kick the dates and times out to any, please come, you're more than welcome to see what's going on. It gives you a view of what we're teaching our folks to do, and what the new standards are, and what people are going to, instead of the old way of doing things. Absolutely.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll include that in the Friday update.
Perhaps Mr. Cassio and yourself could reenact one of those active aggressor trainings right now?
We could do it here.
Floor?
I'm going to do yoga first.
Bad people, get out, right?
So, a real question. The grant, 120,000 we're asking for, we get reimbursed 57% of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Man, what I'll do in the Friday update, I'll give you an actual figure. I'll pull everything.
It might be a little higher, because things matter with just-
Because I can tell you, one of the things also with the servers that Mike speaks about, one of the things we have to add in too is, we have to have a license for each camera. So that's another pricey piece that we had to put in. So if we have a new, it's called an NVR. If I purchase a new NVR, I also have to purchase a license for the cameras. And I don't know off the top of my, how many cameras at the high school alone?
Oh geez, 110, I want to say. So the new server, it's a one-time purchase, but they have to be licensed to go through the server. And then we found out too, doing audit of the camera system, there's, it's not that many, because some of our cameras are old at some of the older schools, but there's like 15 cameras that wouldn't be supported on new NVR. So in order for them to function, we have to purchase those 15 new ones to get them to function. So those were included in there too. But this is desperately needed, because if we don't have the NVRs, which are the servers, we have no camera system. So there's a plan in place to move forward, getting those out anyway, but hopefully we get the grant this time. This is not the first time we've applied for it, and we haven't gotten anything in the past. So hopefully we do, and we can get these done sooner than later, because they're badly needed.
You're all set? Matt?
Just a question, did I miss it? What's the timeline here? Can you tell it again, when this is all going to happen?
For the grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the, the application had to be in by the final day of April, which was submitted on time. All we've gotten so far is just acknowledged that they received it, and it's completed, and they're in receipt. I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, so they don't have a timeline?
They don't have a timeline. They didn't provide any in the grant package, nor have they gotten any update on that. If I do, we'll certainly let you know.
Thanks, okay.
Chris, did you have a question?
You mentioned some of the training you're doing, and you said this is an elective act by the teachers?
It is, at this point.
I'm tired of labor this a little bit, but I'm assuming that when, during the operational day, you have people that are obviously not in classrooms, they're in the hallways, and they're working the perimeter, or they're in the cafeteria. I assume some of this training is sort of the old, if you see something, do something, or say something, or ask something. And I'll just give you a personal, I said this to Mike, so I'm not talking out of school.
Sure.
Last year, I decided to become a basketball official at my advanced age, which meant I had to, you know, show up at middle schools at a weird time of the day, like 3:00. At 3:00, that's what's, 3:00? Buses.
Dismissal.
Right? And I'm not a, I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it, but I'm a fairly tall guy, right? When I'm standing around little children, I mean, you know.
Sure.
I mean, it's not like I would, I'd kind of stand out a little bit. There were times where, and I won't say which schools, I walked right into that school without being confronted.
Right.
Okay? I had a bag in my hand.
Nobody knew who you were.
Lunking, dark person, you know, with, clearly, they don't know.
Right.
Now, sometimes I had my little basketball uniform on, it was very cute, and they could figure out I was a ref, but even then-
Right, they don't know who you are.
-you don't know if I'm a ref posing as whatever. Some schools were right on me like that, okay? Point of the spear, didn't get past the front door. But I walked into a couple of these schools completely unfettered. And I'll tell you something, there are schools with a lot bigger budgets than we did, and some very modern, very pretty, modern schools with lots of nice new cameras. So I just say that, that if you look at some of the shootings, the tragic shootings we've had, you've seen some of the stories, one door left open because someone was out having a cigarette. You can have all the hardened things in the world, but if people aren't asking those questions, looking for people that don't belong, and then confronting that situation, not thinking that someone else will take care of it, because that's just how people are, right? That they don't want to make a scene, they don't want to have a false alarm. It's a very fine line. You want to have maximum, you know, maximum effect here, but at the same time, you don't want to be pulling the fire alarm every 20 seconds.
Right, it's a balance.
And I'm all for this, and I think this is great, but I just, I throw that out there, I'm sure it's something you set up at night thinking about all the time.
Yeah, that's my job.
But the teachers and the administrators, and the people that are kind of in the-
So Mr. Hilli, to your point, you're exactly right, right? So when we started to get away from the traditional lockdown, haylock, and huddle in a corner, do nothing, and pray, so we're going to run, hide, fight, Alice model, I started out by messaging. And what we have to do, and we find out from the studies of all the incidents that's went down, is we have to give our personnel, from the janitors, to the lunch aids, to the teachers, to the principals, to our security folks, we have to give them the authority and the ability to understand that they have a right and an obligation to act, right? Anybody can call lockdown if there's, God forbid, something, a weapon on. But, and we know in other case studies that that didn't happen. People saw, and when they were asked, "Why did you not, I didn't know I could." We empower, that's my message, started out with empowering, then moving on to the run, hide, fight thing, and talk, and then incorporating in drills, and we're going to culminate in actually doing the training, right? So we, I get that message out at staff meetings when I'm invited to come in, which I do around the district, at our safety and crisis team meetings, when we have the smaller ones, and we get it out. Listen, you see somebody that doesn't belong, "Can I help you, sir?" Confront, right? If there's, you need assistance, we have radios, there's ways to do it. Ask these people, because the police aren't everywhere, I'm not everywhere, right? So we have to take accountability for our own safety, and our folks are, they're on that, they're getting it. And that message is going to get, and we're going to continue to do that. And I think the training and the drills we're doing, and the messaging, is getting out there, and they're doing a great job with it. They really are.
No, I, I, I-
Yeah, but your point is well-taken. I mean, we have to be responsible for our own school and our own safety. If you see something, shut the door, we don't know who you are, right? Or ask you, like you said, right? You're there for a perfectly legitimate reason, but if nobody asks, they don't know who you are. So that's what we teach our staff to do. And we also teach them, if something's wrong with a door or something, tell us, we'll get it addressed, but we need to know. It's not somebody else's issue, we need to work. This is a team, community-wise, school safety is community, parents, janitors, everybody. It's a community to keep our kids safe, and that's the message we preach.
Yeah, but my final point is that, that one moment of the day, which is the most, I think, is the beginning of the day, when the kids are filing into the school.
Correct.
There's lots of people around, there are a lot of moving parts, there's buses, there's people, there's teachers, there's, I mean, it's a zoo, right? Same thing at 3:00. I just noticed this when I was doing that, how easy it is.
And that's why at our dismissal policies, at different schools, you'll see adults positioned at different locations to be those eyes and ears, right? I mean, we have guards at the high school in an SRO, we have a guard at the middle school in an SRO, and if I'm there, I think, we have teachers and principals, and I'll help out too at the lower levels. So that's taken into, they're told never, a door is never open at dismissal unless there is an adult there, other than that, shut, because we need somebody there to be those eyes and ears and protect our kids if we need to. So those policies, they do a great job around here with their dismissal and their entry processes here around the district, making sure adults where they are supposed to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board comments?
Thank you, I really do appreciate the update. You know what, we're, we just hope and pray that this doesn't happen so long.
Well, it's unfortunate we have to even talk about this, but we're going to do it, and we're going to give our folks the knowledge to do what they need to do, and we'll never need it.
Right, and then with the warmer weather coming along, and the gyms being used, and the ability to open doors, because the air conditioning's not working, I think we just have to be more aware of that whole situation.
Sure. Well, I know it's hot and everything, but I'm not a big advocate even open the doors in the gym while schools are in there.
The only thing I'm really-
I'll walk by and shut them.
Yeah. The other thing I'm really pleased is the communication with the superintendent and the physical services, as well as you. That seems to be a priority for us as a board.
Right.
That continues, and I'm surprised that they didn't want to take advantage of the grant for anything, but, you know, they've got their own grants, I guess they're going after. I think that's a key element that we're, we're trying to do, and we just stay, but to communicate and stay focused.
Correct.
Because that's who we are.
Yeah, and I'll wrap up just with an actual story that we experienced recently, one of our elementary schools, where, you know, the call came through the radio, we have a radio in the superintendent's office, a radio in the outer office, and we got a call for police to go to an elementary school. It was one of our classroom teachers that noticed a car that appeared to be suspicious. Seen the car on two consecutive days, the one day there was somebody in it with a child, the next day it was empty, and, you know, appeared to be wearing some sort of camouflage, couldn't find the individual. So the police came, they investigated, they ran the plate, they found it was a Weathersfield resident, but not at that school. So Mr. Bearbald, police department, did some additional digging. It turned out that it was a parent from one of our other elementary schools that was training to be a autumn bus driver. And they were parking over at this elementary school and getting on the bus as the bus dropped the kids off at that elementary school. So again, it was the type of thing where I see something, it doesn't seem right, it ended up being completely fine, but that is exactly what we want to see. Somebody saw something, they said something, and we were able to resolve the issue.
And we'd rather have it be nothing than something. So this is the message that's getting out there.
Correct, so.
And recruiting bus drivers.
But there you go.
It was a win-win, it worked out quite nicely, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bearbald, thank you.
You're most valuable.
Okay, Board of Education meetings held. We had a special Board of Education meeting on 4/26, 23 at 10:30 AM. Mr. Emmett, you want to?
That was in relation to a student issue.
Okay. Human Resources Committee on 4/27.
We, that's me. So we met, we, Mr. Donahue did a presentation in regards to staff absences, attrition, and we also discussed the exit policy for interviews, and it was very informative, and hopefully we're on the right track. We will be coming back, hopefully, to discuss and put a little bit more concrete work on the exit interview policy.
Thank you. And Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaboration.
Not going to do it, because-
I filled in for Bobby yesterday. The Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, their goal is for all Weathersfield children birth to eight, that they are healthy, developmentally successful learners, and connected to the community. We're always reminded that community is at the heart of WECC, making connections and gathering support from all areas of the community, intersecting every area of Weathersfield life. First on their agenda was the results of a survey sent out by the TLC preschool, which is Parks and Rec preschool. And with 50% of the parents responding, they found that people are generally very happy with the program. Their recommendations, though, consistently were that their two-day-a-week program be expanded for the four-year-olds going into kindergarten, and parents would also like to see a developmental sports program to be added to the curriculum. They discussed the preschool scholarships, which has, thanks to the Weathersfield Mayor's Charity Ball scholarship, 37 children since 2017 have been able to access preschool. There was not a mayor's ball this year, so they will be looking to find ways of increasing their funding. Also on the agenda, the governor is looking for parent input on how to reimagine childcare in Connecticut through his OEC Blue Ribbon Panel, so Office of Early Education.[1711.15] Information about this can be found at connecticutoec.org/bluribbinpanel. Hopefully, what comes out of it is greater access across the board for preschool, and the dream is always for universal preschool. They discussed the summer transition program to kindergarten. WECC does not organize this, but they work very hard to aid in the facilitation of the operation of the program. Forty-three families are presently registered for this four-week program. Each family gets one week, which is actually four days. And parents are learning while the students are getting more comfortable about kindergarten. And lastly, they mentioned, one of the last things was that the PEP graduation will be May 25th at 6:30 at Loretta's Dream in Millwoods. This, the PEP is the Parent Leadership Training, People Empowering People. It's quoted from the website, "PEP is a UConn Extension Certificate course that can help parents fill gaps in their resume in transition careers, and it helps them be very involved in things like porch photographs," I forget what they call those, "and other things going on around town and taking more leadership roles." The class is led by Janine Barassi, and they will not have a June meeting. They will be getting together in the summer to discuss their annual meeting in the fall.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, meeting scheduled, tomorrow's Memorial Day Parade, Student Programs and Services on May 16th at 6:00.